Village of Franklin Planning Commission regular meeting to order. Could we do a roll call starting from the right? Am I right?
Paul Rigman, present.
Sarah Greslick, present.
Pete Halick, president.
Stuart Wooders, present.
Jeremy Warner, present.
Linda Novak, present.
Quincy Harrison, present.
Great. All right, so could we get a motion to adopt the agenda as written? Or do we have any amendments?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Any comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. So let's go and review the minutes. So we have two meetings to review minutes of. Make sure when you approve a meeting minute, make sure you attended that meeting. Since this is partly why we canceled last meeting is that we didn't have enough from either of the two meetings to actually approve the minutes from those meetings. So, yes, so the first minutes to approve would be from the March 15th, sorry, March 19th, 2025 meeting. So the four that were present for that meeting are Paul, Sarah, Pete, and Quincy.
What, wait?
Did you say March?
I'm sorry, I'm not looking at April. My bad. Right.
I mean, we have March and April today.
We do have March and April. Sorry, I was looking at our work. Yeah, so the present was Paul, Sarah, Pete, Linda, Jeremy, and myself. So. Are there any updates or changes for that meeting that you'd prefer to amend?
I thought they looked good.
Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from the March 19th, 2025 meeting?
Motion to adopt the minutes from the March 19th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then now the April 16th, 2025 meeting. So I'll abstain from the vote, but Paul, Sarah, Pete, and Quincy, anything you'd like to change from that minute, the minutes there?
I thought they were very immaculate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we get a motion then to approve the minutes? The immaculate minutes?
I will, motion to approve the minutes from April 16th.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, great. So those minutes have been adopted. Thank you. Yes.
No.
Did you have a comment?
No, no.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Sorry.
That's fine.
I thought I did.
We'll move on next to the official reports. Trustee Sally, you're here. Would you mind offering the council liaison report for us, please?
Yep, just a couple of things were raised at the last meeting, one of them being to, and Stuart, you and I connected this morning, so if you want to talk more on it, I'll leave the kind of the dialogue to you. But around kind of, in our meeting, it was to explore the potential of a blight ordinance, but rather, I think, the first steps would be to analyze our ordinances and to understand whether or not there's gaps to try and account for maybe hazardous materials or things being stored on properties that could lead to hazardous materials to the aquifers or water systems, as well as just things that would deem overly unsightly. These type of ordinances aren't unfamiliar for most communities. We don't have one, but rather than diving directly into the creation of an ordinance, probably identifying the gaps of our current ordinances would be more appropriate. The other thing too is to go through the process. I think, I guess, Stuart, we talked this morning, and it seems like the only priorities that we have right now are things that are on the agenda, but ultimately, again, my goal is to always provide you all with as much direction as possible from the council. So again, as you start to stack up different priorities, that we be able to prioritize them from council, bring it to you to make sure that you all are working on the things that are aligned with the council's policy vision. So that's really it. Everything else, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee. So as trustee Sally mentioned, I think those of you who've been on planning for a while know that sometimes our ordinances are more robust areas, but lacking.
Thank you, sorry.
Lacking enforceability in others. And the same is true in some cases with regards to debris or, I mean, we already have an ordinance that covers lawn grass and how that should be treated, but also if there's, you know, a large amount of stuff in your, in the yard, whether it's contractor equipment or whatever it may be that could become unsightly. We've been asked to look to see how we can help either bolster those ordinances or find out if the ordinance is just not being enforced properly, and that's why we're seeing that. That will lead us to having Dawn, our code enforcement officer, as well as Bill Dinan, might attend with us as well to help as we're covering these ordinances. I know that Bill, we were encouraging him to come to this meeting for the historic district R3, but as far as I see so far, our priorities and things we're working on, cleaning up ordinances is something we tend to do a lot of. I know that we're waiting also on the American Eagle, the American legal report back on where we're not in compliance as well. So there's a few things along those lines that will end up becoming, we'll have to prioritize with council with regards to those ordinances at some point. So those are kind of the main points I wanted to bring up from council. So I think the other thing that I have not seen at council yet, but I don't know if it made to the legal committee maybe, is our annual report. I know that we had talked about it in previous meetings, but I don't know if that made it to council for legal review to present to council. So it was previously brought up. Is that, was that where we stand on the annual report?
It was forwarded to council.
Okay, all right. Okay, so.
Is, would you be looking for ratification of it? What action would you be looking?
It was more just letting, I mean, to put it in the minutes so that council, because we see it and they can look in our minutes, but it's just a report to council, make sure that they get.
To enter it into the record.
Enter it in the record.
Okay, makes sense. All right, thank you.
That's it. I want to make sure that everyone that worked on things got, gets credit from council. I know you do a good job of complimenting when we get things through, but at the same time, the public doesn't always attend this very well, and so it's great to have you get the recognition for the work you do here in council, I mean, on commission. So, all right, those are my minutes, those are the things that I wanted to report on tonight, and trustee Sally did a great job of summarizing for me as well, the things that, the other things I was considering. So any commissioners have any updates or reports they wanted to bring up?
I had a quick question. I know we had brought up in one of the last meetings the status of the master plan and where that stood in ratification out in the world around us and then sort of planning for the next one ahead. I didn't know where we were at on it, and just for my own calculator of schedule, I know it's a five-year countdown, so I just wanted to see where we were at with that.
I believe the last question I had last in May or April was that exact question.
I know, I think we talked about it, but I couldn't remember where we were at.
And it was, it's still being distributed to other neighboring towns.
What Meg was wanting to do is she wants to create a page so it can sit on our website so it can be reviewed that way from not just the communities, but from the residents as well. So she's in the process of working that, working the keys out of that. We hope they have that up soon.
Okay.
What would it be? Just a part of the, because there is a link now to the master plan.
She wants to create a page.
Okay.
And I guess to follow up your question about the same topic. Yeah, we're coming up on the five-year review every year, like, this is the first time going around. Can we just do a little like asterisk with it to the other communities around us saying like, hey, this is also for our 2025 update due?
I'm not sure I understand.
I don't want to have to get them, approve it, we ratify it, and then my neck in.
In six months.
September, go ahead and say, hey, by the way, here we have to do it again, and just send them the same packet.
So I believe this one, this one would pass, then you do it again in five years. You don't have.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
That was, that was the impression we were given, that no matter what, every five to 10 years has to be done.
Five years.
That's where I was confused too, of when the clock start date was. Was it when council approved, like, when that was? So having that.
Well, we've had several councils since then. So.
So I just didn't know where we were at in terms of looking at it for the next time.
Thank you.
Oh, I do apologize, one thing I didn't bring up. So we did receive a submission right before this meeting at 5:00 to planning, but given the time of the submission and the relevance to, we would refer this to either to council or to zoning at this time, because it's not necessarily pertinent to, to planning. So we would recommend that the submission go to, to council instead. So. They're the ones that can do something about it, not us.
So I'll second that.
No, you don't, I'm just, I'm just stating for the record that we received it and that we recommend that it be actually taken to council.
So it will be added in the minutes?
Yeah. Go, commissioners, any, anything else?
So the, the sale of the bank, I was curious, is there any update on that?
We, we thought we had someone who's interested for whatever reason it built the building, so the bank is still for sale.
What type of, any idea what type of buyer it was?
We don't even know. We don't know why it keeps falling through. It's like, you think you have somebody getting excited because now it's something's going to be done with that property, and then at the last minute, it falls.
My guess, people not realizing it's a historic building, and they can't do any adjustments to the exterior of it.
That's one of the things we are thinking, or they, they buy the property, one buy the property and you realize it's an historic district, there's certain limits.
There's, yeah.
That, that they can't take into consideration. And we did have, in the beginning, we did have someone who wanted to turn it into a vet clinic.
That'd be awesome.
But we are not allowed to have animals overnight. So that's why, they called first, so they got the information, so they moved on.
Interesting.
So I guess, how about the other building? The, is that the Rust House? I don't know what we call it, the old relitor building?
It's right at the corner here.
Other, yeah.
Oh.
Yes. They're making progress, so that's all we know right now. So that's good.
Right. So I guess, you know, I.
I know it's up for sale, but we, they had this interest, we just haven't had it, we haven't gotten any yet.
Right.
Is that one for sale or for lease?
Huh?
Is that one for sale or for lease?
I thought it was for sale.
I saw prices on it, so maybe also.
The old, the old real estate.
The red building.
Right across from the library.
It was Cranbrook, and then it was, what, what was the other one? So it was a real estate, what was the?
Yeah, it was.
Is that the green?
No.
It was a green sign.
Howard Hanna.
Howard Hanna, so what were you saying then, David, what?
I believe the sign says sale or lease.
Right, right. So, you know, I guess I mentioned it, that, you know, they have a big effect on our village, potentially, they can make a big difference, and hopefully, it's, it's always for the better. But, you know, my focus continues to be on the parking. I, I think it's a, you know, the defining factor as to whether our businesses will do well and whether our buildings will be desirable to purchase, whether cars can get in there is pretty significant. And I know that this planning commission has done work on that in the past. And I know, Linda, you had said, you know, well, what would we do if we were to make a recommendation? And, you know, as much as anything, it's, it's having that issue being, being, you know, high up on the visibility so that, you know, that both, it could be a great thing for whoever buys the building, and it would be a great thing for the Village of Franklin, and, you know, whatever can be done to keep that, you know, on the radar that, that potential would be fantastic. So, you know, David, if you can take it back to council or just have there be some awareness of that, I'm sure there is, but, you know, whenever these buildings change hands, there's opportunities, so. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Pete.
What about the gray dog? Is it, is there an opening date?
There's not an opening date, but they have received permission from a historic district, historic district commission to, on colors, exterior approval for the building, and there's a few, there's only, the only thing that they didn't get approval for is, and they're, they're fine waiting on this, is the, some lighting, some sconces, choices.
The old consignment store.
The old farmhouse, the old farmhouse.
Oh, the farmhouse.
The old farmhouse.
Oh.
So that, so they've already approved the windows for a walk-up ice cream parlor, they've already approved the colors and some of the other things that were required for alcohol consumption on premises. So things that they had asked for have been approved, and, and then, yep, so they're making progress. She's, she's been given the go-ahead to move forward on that.
So what about the one next to the Franklin? Is that going to be opening soon? The second.
Oh, like the cafes?
The cafe or whatever.
I can't remember the name of it.
Polly's?
Polly's? Something like that, yeah.
Any?
I don't know.
Their website doesn't have an opening date, but like, my kids are really excited about it, so they keep asking.
Any other things that are mentioned from the commissioners?
There was no zoning.
No zoning, okay. And then communication update, Quincy, your question, I was going to add, as far as communication goes, I met with, I went to the historic district committees meeting earlier this month to discuss the historic R3 district topic that we're working on and requested some collaboration from them. So I would, as we try to continue our communication with Main Street and the other divisions within the village, let's, let's, you know, work, work on kind of divvying that up, but I think we don't want our village committees to be in a vacuum or in a silo, because I think as we go in to make plans or help plan, hopefully, we're representing all of the different groups as we're helping set the vision the council wants us to set for the village. We need to make sure we're all communicating, so. That's my progress on communication. I don't know if there's anything else, anyone else's from a communication standpoint, update to that? Sarah, do you have anything? Okay. All right, so let's move on then to budget and expense report.
I have a comment question about the estimated values for the year so far. We noticed that our budget for engineering and our budget for membership is 700, 800 respectively, and we have current percentages for both at zero, but showing that the avail, oh, that's available, okay, never mind. So it's available, but we're not using it, so why is it taken up? Should those be zeroed out? Should we have 1,500 less since we haven't used those?
So this is not reflective, you mean of the total or of the?
Because our total budget for engineering should be $700, if zero percent's been used, isn't our estimated available, zero still? Not sure, I don't know why, I'm just noticing it now.
Oh, you're, no, the year-to-date is how much we've spent, so our total, we haven't used, so the 70.
Add it, yeah. But our estimated, oh, our estimated for the year is 70.
So year-to-date plus available equals total budget?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, never mind, ignore me.
So this is the last month of, of the year, obviously, we're, there's a few months that need catch-up for this, for this fiscal year.
We're still waiting for some invoices to come in.
For April and, and May? Oh, May, I understand, happens all the time. But April, really?
Really?
Really.
I'll have to check on that.
I was going to say, Chris, you guys want to get paid, right?
Now this one.
That's it, and I've, I've been looking at data stuff, I can see anything.
I'll check on it.
Yeah, okay, so we'll be able to, so the council, I believe, just passed the next year's budget, fiscal budget, year budget, and I believe our number is slightly different, but it's more reflective of what we have been spending lately. If things are on this trend, we'll still be coming in under budget, which I believe after this goes, is rolled into the general fund, into the reserves for the village. So as we're trying to be fiscally mindful as a planning commission, we want to have the funds necessary to be able to do the activities to complete our duties, but at the same time, you know, when we go to spend money, it's good to be able to not spend everything that's in our budget. We have had to ask in the past for money and.
When was the last time we asked?
Couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah.
With the tree survey.
The tree survey, the natural wildlife survey, the swamp survey.
Yeah, that's all those.
Oh, gosh.
I don't remember asking for that money, but okay.
It kind of just happened.
I believe we may have.
It kind of just happened.
It did happen, yeah. But we should be in, you know.
Where should we go in this year?
We've had two cancellations, so, you know, it should allow us, certainly it will help us to, to meet our budget and could even, you know, it's, it's always painful for me to see planning commission meetings that don't happen. I mean, I understand, it saves, it does save money, you guys have to be here, you guys need to earn money, but us here, we, we're just talking, and, and we can do that kind of stuff. And, you know, and obviously, it's the trustees prerogative, how we direct ourselves and spend our time, and, and I certainly respect it. But I do, you know, I do feel that there's nothing wrong with us, okay, especially for over so many years that this planning commission has been in business and so many things that have been reviewed that are forgotten, or, you know, they're all, all those people are gone now, and you don't remember it anymore. And I feel like we do skimp on our future vision. You know, I'd, I'd love to see some visionary people, some town planners, architects, people like that, who can really offer professional expertise, so. You know, it's, obviously, it's, it's up, I'm merely expressing an opinion, and, but I throw it out there as, for consideration.
I don't think our new budget will prevent us from doing that if we need to have those come in, or if there's a good opportunity for them to come in. So I, no, you're, you're right, Pete, I mean, those are opportunities for us to, to learn as well as to help enhance the vision of the village and present something to council that they, that they could catch a vision of, so no, it's within our mandate still.
I, I guess, you know, there was a council at one time, and their philosophy was, you know, the president came in and said, bring us ideas, we love ideas. And then other times, it's less so, you know? I think, and we do, we have a great crew here, I, you know, got to say, we've had, you know, mixed crews in, in past, and I think we got a lot of, a lot of sharp folks and people who do care about the village and certainly have worthy opinions about, you know, direction of my goal, so.
Any comments or, thank you, Pete, any comments or questions for the ballot budget?
No.
Okay. We'll now open up.
I was going to say, fiscal year 2024, 2025, what's the 2024 part?
It's the first half, it's the last half of last year going into the first half of this year, right?
So it actually starts in September, July, July.
Yeah. All right, so we'll now move on to public comments. Do we have anyone from the public? We have one more person that showed up, thank you for coming to the meeting, so if no public comments, then we'll move to our old business, which is considered zoning regulations for historic district R3. So your memo, Chris, is from the two meetings, or I guess is from the April meeting. Is there, were there, are there highlights that you'd like to bring up for us, for those that might not have been in that meeting, or that, things, things that you'd like to recommend for us?
I guess, just to recap, way back in October of 2024, the planning commission was informing that the village council wished the planning commission to investigate whether fence regulations should be revised to consider special conditions in the R3 district. And then we learned since then that no, the village council wanted us to take a broader look at regulations in the R3 district. And so that's what the purpose of this memo was, dated March 21st, 2025. But when we went through, we looked at setbacks and lot widths and fences and so forth. What it really boils down to is there's two main issues. There's setbacks and there's fences. Those are the two things that really can be adjusted. And what we found is that there's a substantial number of houses in the R3 district that do not conform to the existing side rear setback requirements. In addition, most of the detached garages do not conform to the minimum 10-foot setback requirement. So what does that mean? It means that these non-conformities could pose constraints. For example, if somebody living in one of those houses wanted to renovate, wanted to expand, they would come up against the setback requirements that would pose constraints on expanding or building renovations. Or looking at it from another perspective, if there was a catastrophe, a fire that damaged a substantial portion of their house, or tornado took down their garage, they, they would come up against those setback requirements that would impose a severe.
Hardship.
Hardship for them. So on page two of our letter, we present some ideas to alleviate the setback constraints. And if I could turn to page two. One option, for example, we have in the zoning ordinance for setbacks, we have the total of two side setbacks has to be equal to 25 feet for the residences. We don't see the point of that ourselves, and you could eliminate that, just end up with a minimum of 10-foot side setback, I think it's 10-foot, yeah, 10-foot side setback on each side, and that would benefit 10 properties that are hemmed in by this setback requirement. Another option that can be considered is reduction of the 40-foot rear yard setback requirement. A reduction to 30 feet would have a substantial and immediate beneficial impact on almost all the R3 properties. So those are two ideas that would have a rather substantial impact on, on the resident portion of the setback issue. And then on the garage issue, as I said, most of the garages are non-conforming with respect to setbacks, and a reduction of five feet in the side and rear setback for detached garages would provide some relief for property owners and make more efficient use of the land. So for example, if their garage, it's not going to affect them if, you know, if, if they're not taking down their garage or if their garage isn't damaged, but if their garage is taken down by catastrophe, by fire or by tornado or something of that nature, why make them comply with this 10-foot setback? It's just creating wasted land on the side or in the rear. And so it makes sense to me, if they're already living with a five-foot setback, why not just make it a five-foot minimum setback for the garages? The fence issue is a little bit more sticky, and, I don't know if you want to discuss the, or do you want me to go on to the fences?
Go ahead and do the summary, and then we can, we can go back to the other topics as well.
Well, the current regulations, a fence is really meant to be an artificially constructed barrier that's allowed at the, at the lot line, and it's supposed to be four feet in height maximum. And in contrast, a privacy screen, according to the ordinance, is intended to screen a selected use or area, like a swimming pool or patio, and it's allowed to be six feet in height. And it's not supposed to be at the, in the yard setback area, so it's not supposed to be at the property line. But in the R3 district, there are six locations where a six-foot-high fence or private But in the R3 district, there are six locations where a six-foot-high fence or privacy screen is located on the property line. So presumably, these were allowed prior to the current regulations taking effect. So, they're legally nonconforming. So, this situation raises some interesting questions, which are listed on page four of our letter, I think. So, given the small size of many of the lots in the R3 district, does it make sense to allow privacy screens on the property line? So, since there are already six situations where they're on the property line, maybe it's okay to have them on the property line. I'm just throwing out questions now. On some lots, there are simply not, there simply is not a smaller selected use area to carve out that is not within the required setback area. Now, if the village were to allow privacy screens on the perimeter of lots in the R3 district, what restrictions would be necessary to avoid a compartmentalized look? They would disrupt the cohesiveness and the character of the historic district. And then finally, should style be regulated if privacy screens are permitted on the perimeter of lots? And I raise this question because
Yes.
I don't think you would want stockade fences throughout the R3 district, six-foot stockade fences throughout the R3 district. I think that would significantly disrupt the character of the R3 district. So, those are some questions that I, I raise. I think they're policy questions that you have to debate among yourselves. And based on your deliberation, I, you know, we can craft regulations. You may come up with the answer that no, the regulations are fine the way they are. Or you may decide that privacy screens or six-foot fences, whatever you want to call them, are okay on the property lines in the R3 district. So, that's my introduction.
Thank you.
So, I mean, as Chris mentioned, there's quite a few things for us to consider. We can take these, the, one at a time. Overall, does anyone have any comments overall about this?
Yes.
Well, the first is I think that as far as the fences and the three criteria that we're looking at, I think that there definitely needs to be a fourth criteria for blocking view and light. And nobody wants to have a brick wall built outside of their window. And I think that that is something that's gonna need to be considered because a lot of those historic homes are lower. The windows are lower and, you know, I think that allowing somebody to put something up that's going to restrict those windows is, I, I think, a criteria that we absolutely have to look at.
So, the April meeting, when we did have this, we did have this similar discussion of this then as well. And it was addressed solutions for all the perimeter stuff and such for heights like that, keeping the natural look. We talked about, you know, having our providing trees put in for property line stuff. If you want more of a privacy screen as opposed to a real one, get a natural one, something the historic district will go along with. We mentioned, we went over that pretty, pretty much in detail. And it was addressed with the resident who was here as well to ease their mind about it. And that's realistically what I thought we ended on with this discussion because it's a lot going into it because as you said, there had, as Krista said, there hasn't been much of a the rea, the more reason why we're looking deeper into this is we have a select few residents questioning it versus it's been up and no issues have been occurring for the past, like, 60 years in the neighborhood?
That's my next question. How, how many houses total are there in the R3 district? I mean, this looks like a huge number of houses, but if there's
Six.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we need, we need to look at that overall ratio.
Are you talking, you're just talking about fencing though?
Well, I'm talking about all of it. I mean, we're talking about fencing and we're also talking about
The R3 district is
The garage, the setbacks. And I think, again.
That's the R3 district.
Okay. Yeah. But I'm just asking if there is a count of the number of homes. What's the percentage of the number of homes in there?
Yeah, 37.
37. So, you know, as far as the setbacks, you're talking about 30% that are, that are nonconforming.
But that's just because nonconforming existing fences though, right? But that's not including accessory buildings.
Well, you know, I
There's a lot more that are nonconforming for, or, or for for those.
First question I would have, and I know you're gonna hate it, but what are other communities, you know, downtown Milford that has the historic district? Holly, what, what are they doing? How, what, what are their regulations for addressing these two issues?
I don't know. I'd have to look.
So, in a, in a similar vein to that, what is the philosophy behind it? Is there a, you know, if you were to ask 10 historic people who are also planners and have a knowledge in this area, do you, do you have an impression of how they would feel about historic character? I mean, my next question will be what we learned from the historic society, but, or the historic district commission. But do you have a sense for that or not so much?
Well, I think it depends whether you look at, whether you're talking about the setbacks or the fences. If you look at setbacks and you look at historic districts, historic districts are traditionally very compact. And so, you can look at any number of historic districts and you'll find them much more compact than Franklin's historic district is. So, when you look at the setbacks that we're looking at, if you decrease the setbacks, it's not unusual to even find zero setbacks in a lot of historic districts. On side setbacks, particularly on side setbacks. So, on that issue, you know, the setbacks, that's the situation that you'll, you'll find in a lot of historic districts. With respect to fences, I can tell you that communities are all over the place. You'll find some communities just prohibit fences. And on the other hand, there are communities, I'm just trying to think of some. I'd have to do a survey, I guess, but they generally, I think you'd find in historic districts, they don't generally go for privacy screens.
Real, real quick, going back again to April's meeting, it was requested that we reach out to historic district commission to get their input as well. Was anybody able to reach out to them for today's meeting? I assume not.
That's what I did. That's where I reported on.
I'm sorry I'm catching up.
Yeah. So, I can go ahead and summarize some of the feedback from them, but I'd like, I encourage them to come as well to these meetings. But the main feedback that I received was that when, before something goes to historic district, they, and before they get a permit submitted, they, they try and recommend that they look at the ordinance to see if they, if they're gonna have to go to zoning before they even go to the historic. Because before zoning, before historic can even chime in on something, it's gonna have to go to zoning. It's gonna have to, i- if it's gonna be an exception. And so, looking at the ordinance, whether or not it's permitted and a lot of, if there is a, have been a, a natural disaster that occurs downtown and we have to replace some of these deficiencies, then what happens to those individuals? They'll have to go get a, actually get an official zoning variance for the, for the existing ordinance. And then they can rebuild whatever structure was, was there. And so, and then if they get the variance, then they would go to historic and historic would then have to approve colors and things that would impact the historic district. And so, ultimately, what, what they're looking, what, what, my understanding of what they're looking for was if we update the ordinance, it, some guidance on how to fulfill, fulfill the ordinance would be helpful for people going into whatever they're building or whatever they're, we're putting into. So, if, like you mentioned about the type of fence, right? So, you know, historic's gonna have a recommendation on the type of fences and they're gonna have to sign off on something along those lines or a recommendation to the individual, especially if it enters the visible, visible view for, for the village. So, there's, that's kind of the feedback, but we still need to work on that dialogue with them to understand as we, as we make these changes.
There's a couple of points I wanted to make. Just from being on zoning, a few issues that kind of come up. One example, you talked about going to historic first. We actually encouraged the opposite direction. Maybe there should be an actual instruction for people, but we don't, we were at zoning, did not want to hear about anything in R3 unless historic had already approved it.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's how we did it. I don't know if there's any additional instruction that they like to have. But speaking to issues that came up into R3, so when you look at like whatever this, is it Calvin? I can't read it on here. It's between Carroll and German Mill. You have issues in the historic district where there's four houses on there. Three of those houses have two-car nonconforming garages. One has a one-car. They had to get a variance to make it look exactly like everybody else's. So, I think the issue is the chilling effect. People don't want to come try to get a variance when everybody else already has something very similar. Like, every other house in that road has this, but they have to come get a variance for it. Is, is kind of the issue that I think we really want to, you know, address with that. And, you know, like fences, so like seven out of 37, so one-six over one-six already have some sort of fence issue. Maybe there's this medium ground. I don't think we want stockade six-foot fences on every border, but maybe we could do privacy four-foot fences or certain styles.
Four-foot or
But they have to have a certain They can't, you could do a four-foot privacy fence, whatever that, we decide that to be, but somehow more solid than the, I think it's 60% open than that they have to be now. But there's, there's just those issues that were coming up when we were in zoning where like everyone else has it, I want it too, but now I have to do all these other hoops. So.
Right. But that's precisely why in zoning, we are as careful as we are about what we pass. Because we know that it's, we're not just acting on what's in front of us, we're setting a precedent for everybody coming ahead. So, that, that's why it is so critical. But, you know, the, the other side of it is anybody who is buying a property is gonna have a title search and they will know they are in a historic district. And you know, when you buy a home in a historic district, that you are going to be subject to tighter regulations and that, that you do have a responsibility as a homeowner to, you know, lis, listen to these things and not come back and say, oops, I didn't know. You would have to know. And, you know, I don't know, you know, does quiet enjoyment come into any of this? If, if we do move things and, and we will be, you know, possibly, potentially, if we change these, a lot of these structures that are there now and probably are nonconforming are old.
Right.
And it, it's going to come up. It's going to happen. And, you know, I just think that we need to be really mindful if we're talking about changing these borders, that how are the people who are there now going to be affected by it? And are we opening ourselves up to a lot of lawsuits from current homeowners?
Do you need me to relax it? We would be opening ourselves up?
Yeah. I think so. If, if, you know, somebody who
Somebody may have bought the home in their R3 district because they knew it was strict enough as it is where there wouldn't be issues in the future and they wouldn't deal with that, deal with anything. And they wouldn't have to worry about having to make adjustments to conform with the rest of the neighborhood because it's, again, historic district. Why would it change?
You know, we don't hear about things when they're going well.
Right. Exactly. Six years.
I know several of you mentioned the concern like tornado comes through, fire burns it down. Could we lessen the restrictions on replacing existing structures to its pre-existing footprints and make that easier? So, if your garage burns down, you don't have to move it 10 feet over. I can say the same without repainting whatever.
Is that an option?
We can freeze the current state of the exceptions for that property, nonconforming?
Grandfather is excluded. Yeah. You can rebuild.
I would hate to see accidental fires happening.
Well, if one fire, if one accidental fire happens, the whole district goes up. That, that's old timber. That goes quick.
But the new structure would be approved by historic district as well.
Of course.
Well, the new structure, but it should begin being the historic district. It should be rebuilt to exactly what it was. Wait, you can update the materials, but the outside design has to remain the same.
Sure.
I mean, that
The profile of the building, they can't change the height, the roof or within whatever. Some, craft something to
Yeah. Sure. Go ahead and modernize it, but outside and exterior has to be the same footprint, same location, same design.
When you have 75% of them nonconforming.
But who's gonna tear their house down now to re-up it?
No, I'm talking about the detached accessory garage.
Right. Yeah, it's a tough one. I mean, I mean, no, no one wants to have a garage built closer to their house in general. I would think that's very likely to be the case. But if the garage was there when they moved in, I mean, certainly the idea, the idea of, pardon me?
Yeah, they presumably accepted it being there.
Right. And then if it were, it would need to be rebuilt, it seems perfectly reasonable to allow them to rebuild. And so, that would address, you know, if we could legally do that, we're not gonna run into litigation. You know, and it, and it also is consistent with preservation. I mean, you know, it has a certain character to it now. And in general, it's, it's pretty lovely.
So, let me ask you a question real quick about the accessory buildings. Are any of the accessory buildings larger than 500 square feet? Because that's one of the stipulations for accessory buildings in the R3 is that it says the maximum size of all accessory buildings in a square foot of two that you're allowed cannot exceed 500 square feet plus 25% of the ground floor area of a, of a principal building. So, do any of those, are any of those stipulations nonconforming to existing nonconforming as well?
The dentist's office on Franklin Road is, that building in the back that we
That's probably not R3.
That's commercial, yeah. It's in the R3 district, but it's a commercial building.
Yeah.
I doubt it.
Okay.
How many accessory buildings are there?
There's 12.
Okay.
Because they're mostly sheds. Yeah, I'm just trying to run
Well, detached garage is considered an accessory building.
A detached garage is an accessory, it's not accessory dwelling, you know, it's an accessory structure.
Yeah. I, I don't think there are any more.
What about the Golden or Walsh people? They have quite a few structures on their lot.
So, you're not allowed to have more than two accessory buildings, according to the ordinances? So,
You know which property I mean, the one down, isn't it the people that own Golden or Walsh?
Give me a map address because I, give me a
Okay, then I gotta recreate my walk.
Is it Boden?
Yeah. What's, what's, if you walk down, what's the last road that it's a dead end?
Oh, the one that goes down this way?
It goes this way.
Oh, it's like this. That's a dead end.
You mean the Coldest?
So the German Mill loops around, comes here, and then it loops, and this goes up the hill.
I guess it is Boden. It's, it's this property, right here, this large property. It's got a pond on it.
Is it Finnicum's?
Oh, you mean like.
That's not really steep down driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
In German Hip Mill?
Yeah.
Bill Finnicum stuff.
So, so, yeah, so.
Yeah, but it, who owns it now?
Bill.
He's still there?
Yeah.
Yeah, but there, so there is a limit on, on number of accessory buildings for R three.
For the pre-existing.
Right, so that, so I'm gonna be devil's advocate a little bit, cause I, I, I am in favor of the idea of locking things, but what happens when you've, you've been in zoning, both of you? Um, so the question is, if you, uh, if zoning allows illegal, non-conforming, um, allows someone to be permitted to, um, build an accessory building 'cause their, all their neighbors have an accessory building, and it's in the same style and likeness of their neighbors, um, but it's currently in, not in that frozen state, their property, I guess, current non-conforming state will start then? Is that the idea? Is after zoning's already approved, I guess you don't have to worry about it, cause you've already been, it's already been approved.
It's confirmed, and it's conforming, it's a variance.
Variance exists.
Yeah, I mean, we passed variances that are for, you know, it, it is not passed on. Um, you know, we, we passed variances for somebody who was ill and needed a special accommodation. Um, you know, so, there are some, there have been, in my time, a couple of variances that didn't pass through with the.
Like a ramp for a wheelchair?
Well, I mean, that, that wasn't the case with this one, but.
Something like that, though.
You know, it's just that it, it's, it is specifically for that, that user and that use.
I have a larger question, I guess. So, I know we have that, like, thing going out right now of looking at all of our ordinances to sort of figure out where we're not. I feel like so many of these issues are gonna come back. Like, in terms of like, this is where we're gonna see, I think, a lot of things within the Historic District of, we have a lot of leeway here, or things aren't really happening. Is there like a better way for us to look at all of those as like a subcommittee with someone from zoning and someone from Historic is like, working together to collaborate on how to do it the right way? So if someone does have an issue, like you said, like, it sounds like it's confusing, like someone thinks, oh, I gotta go to zoning first, someone thinks they have to go to Historic. I do think that there needs to be better communication or language out there in terms of setting these things, so that way people know what to do, or we're working together and not against each other in the way that we're formulating these ordinances, and we're working smarter, not harder, so that way we're each collaborating in agreement with the master plan that keeps the historic character, so we're all sort of working on the same end goal together, cause I don't think it's just going to be just this issue. I do think other things are gonna come from that. Um, whatever the report is about these ordinances, historical related. I do think that it's, other things are gonna shake out. So is there a better way to sort of like, get the experts in all of, in the same room at the same time, looking at it, of how does this actually work for someone walking through it? Cause I don't think, like, even me, having, I don't live in the Historic District, so for me, I have very limited knowledge, and I can offer what I can offer, but I would feel so much better if someone from Historic and with zoning background were here telling me about it, or, you know, we could all support that. I feel like so much more. And it gives us an opportunity to collaborate so much better with other auxiliary groups.
And I will tell you that in zoning, we put a lot of weight on that. I mean, if somebody comes to us with something, one of the questions that we'll be asking is, have you been to, to the Historical Commission? And if they say yes, and it's gone through Historical, we will probably look a little bit more favorably on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the, the other thing that I will tell you is, in my time on zoning, I haven't been on zoning forever, your dad's been on a lot longer than I have, but, um, I really haven't heard that many cases. I mean, one that's been going on for a very long time. But other than that, I can only think of a very small handful.
Oh, I, yeah, I can tell you from ninety-five to two thousand and ten, every month you guys had a meeting.
Well, yeah, but we have a reason.
About, about four, four topics per meeting.
Yeah, we have not recently. I mean, we've had more months without meetings than with meetings.
So, um, sir, you're making a recommenda- you're making a recommendation, though, of having a subcommittee to talk, and try and, that has representatives from zoning, Historic, and planning to discuss these specific, these ideas specifically with regards to a solution, to then come back to planning to, to kind of have a formal report, um, recommendation?
I mean, it would feel much better having the experts who work on these committees having the language and the knowledge behind it than just starting from, hey, this has, this many percentage doesn't have this. Like, I want someone who's walked through the processes to know what, you know, and what they normally allow, and what they don't, and what they're looking for, than for me, as someone who doesn't live there, to be dictating it. And I just feel like they're the experts in the room, and then when we do get that report back, then we also have a knowledge base to go back to, uh, hey, these other things look a little weird. What can we do here? And it builds collaboration.
What?
So, if, if other people are cool with that, I, I just, I would feel much more comfortable in terms of like, having people with this historic knowledge and their reference frame behind it, other than just taking pieces of Chris's report and just being like, this is the math in my head, this sounds good, instead of just not knowing it.
So, so just from my recom- what I'm thinking of as a recommendation, because I don't see, I don't see us being able to move this forward without having a more comprehensive understanding with, across the different groups. Um, the impact, because I feel like right now, our next meeting will be a vacuum, us discussing in a silo, cause, um, and even though we're gonna try and reach out again to Historic and try and get, I think that, um, really the emphasis should be, um, like you're making recommending, and I'm open to other variant, variations on this, but, um, I mean, um, Linda, you're already our zoning liaison, and Quincy, you've been on zoning, um, prior to this. You have that experience. Um, uh, do we, I mean, we, how, how do we wanna, how, how would we recommend, how would you recommend? As a commission, do we recommend trying to make up a body to tackle this? And then bring it back to planning for a recommendation of, of filling out the ordinance? Quincy?
Oh, I, I don't know what level of detail you got to your discussion with Historic District, but if we share these topics with them, and they just say, yes, I wanna talk about them, or no, we don't, that just kinda kills everything. Cause if Historic District doesn't want anything to do with these changes, then I would think it would be done. So I would think that that would be the first step. I don't know what you talked about with them.
We just mentioned, I, I mostly just broached the subject that we're discussing, this topic with them.
And they probably need significant time, maybe, to discuss it, in whatever.
Well, we essentially don't need to do a subcommittee for it. We can sit down and have somebody from our commission, talk to somebody on Historic, to get a better insight, and we don't need to do a whole subcommittee on it. It can just be a discussion with somebody.
Maybe at some point, but like, right now, it could just die.
Yeah, as soon as you mention, yeah, they don't wanna be, no, I don't wanna be part of it, then we're, our points moot.
I think there has to be a substantial discussion with Historic, because really the essence of this is, what you're talking about is the vision for the Historic District.
Right.
So I think there has to be a substantial discussion with the Historic District Commission. I think they're the key party.
Request like a special meeting, a joint meeting of the two committees?
Ooh, I like that. I like that.
It'd be nice to meet.
Do we have no, do we have table chairs in the room?
We, we, we could go to their meeting, or they could come to our meeting, or we could do a.
Maybe do a special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting, yeah.
I, uh, yeah.
But yes, I, I firmly agree. I think, you know, there's a part of me that says, you know, this is really about our Historic District.
Yeah.
And, and if we're doing things, and, you know, no one knows it better than Gary, Gary Roberts. He, he is, he is an architect, and what is he, our, I, I don't know.
He's chairperson.
Twenty-plus years of being the chairperson, and was born in the Village of Franklin. So I would defer and respect his opinion greatly, and the other members. I know, I know many of them live in the Historic District, and, you know, that is the other component to all of this. You know, how, how in the world would you wanna come up with a way to canvas the people who live there? You know, I try to do it in my daily travels. And so many people generally are just like, oh, I don't know, I haven't.
So I'm, I'm not about that.
I wanna, real quick, I wanna just, I'm sorry, continue.
Compete, go ahead and finish, cause if I'm gonna air up.
Thank you, yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you, so that's all, I'm just throwing it out there, is that, you know, the people who live there are obviously impacted by it. Their interests are, you know, may not be always the most communal interests. Um, there's a property value interest, and then there's the character of the village interest. Quality of life, there, you know, several factors, but they play against each other sometimes, so.
I was gonna say, um, in the sense of urgency for, it looks like it's gonna be one of those bad drives home, uh, and you already mentioned, it might, we might need more input from outside sources prior to continuing with this. I would motion to table this until we have those discussions with the outside committees, uh, for next month.
So, do we have a second on the motion? Just table it, or do you wanna, do you mind if I? I, I would like to make, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a direction real quick before, before we do that, because I, I would like to at least, um, ask for volunteers to help set up a special meeting either before Historic Commission, before their meeting, and meet thirty minutes before, and get the groundwork going, and invite, and have, and ask for their buy-in to start this, or, or ask for time specifically in Historic, where, but I'd like to have more than, I mean, I'm, I'd be happy to, um, try and go, but I would like to see if there's anyone on planning that would be interested in attending the, that, that discussion with them.
I will.
Um, Bill, I believe, sets the agenda for that meeting.
Yes, their next meeting is scheduled for July the second.
Okay, I will be in town.
I'd be.
I will be in town. Will you be, you be willing?
I'd be willing to go, yeah.
I'll be in town.
Okay, so, um, Dana, you, um, attend that meeting as well, right?
Yeah.
Based on your experience in that meeting, does it make more sense to ask for a time on the agenda? Cause I think Bill and, and, um, um, the chairperson, they set the agenda for that meeting.
Correct.
So, does it make sense to ask for a special session beforehand, or?
I think the best probably would be to talk to Bill and talk to Gary.
Hello.
It's, it's starting, yes, the storms are starting.
I wanna hear, go ahead, please.
Okay, so, my thing would be the first thing we should do is have a discussion with Bill and Gary. Um, Gary's very open to having workshops prior to Historic District.
Yeah.
Um, I, I believe they would be, uh, would make themselves available for something like that.
Okay.
Let's see what they say.
Okay. So I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Bill and Gary about a special workshop beforehand. Does that seem reasonable? Um, okay, and then we can put that on the calendar for, um, Wednesday to prove it, so I'll talk to them, so.
So here's the thing, also, they may not have a meeting for the second, so maybe that would be a special meeting that we just have in, instead of their regular meeting.
Okay, all right, so, all right, I'll reach out and follow up with them then. Um, but then I will reply, then I'll, I'll reply to Dana, and if you'd like to attend, please attend. Um, you're all welcome. I think that this is a great opportunity for us.
I know.
It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to agree with everything that they say, but at least we understand, we'll understand where they stand on it. It's important, there's no such blowing smoke if they're gonna be met with resistance.
Thank you so much for, for, for your discussion on this, and catching us up from the April as well, um, meeting, so. Any other comments about this topic before we move to the next agenda item? Okay, so, I like that motion.
I have one question, but it's not in that, um, is there anything, I guess, I know this was a really light agenda, anything else like coming forward that we should be educated or aware for next meeting, so we can sort of be.
So Dana will let us know.
Yes.
Well, you know, but I mean, from council, I, I didn't see, like, I know we're sort of waiting.
We're talking about, so for the, with regards to what I mentioned earlier about the, um, I don't wanna say blight, because it's not, we're not in the right area of the city to, for blight. Um, so, um, so Chris, I've, I've asked.
Visual nuisances?
Yes, visual nuisances. I've asked Chris to kind of take a look at, um, what other local areas we're dealing with regards to that, and then if there are any obvious deficiencies in our ordinances with regards to new visual nuisances, or areas that were weak. And then hopefully, hopefully we have a drafted memo or something that we can at least sink our teeth into by next meeting.
The other thing that Dana brought up was like, people keeping chemicals and stuff, and things that could get into our
Yes.
water system, and that brings up the same.
Yes.
That means they're not in non-compliance, cause we went over that last summer.
Yeah.
We went over that last summer. That's non-compliance of any chemicals on the property.
Yeah, that's where, you know, that, that, most of these things are illegal, and we can't get nuisances.
Are you in motion still, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.